Before we start the meeting, I would like everyone to stand. I just want to have a moment of silence for two of our great leaders in the public safety who have recently passed away. Lieutenant, retired Edward Levalle and Deputy Sheriff Sergeant Thomas Sanfrantella. Thank you very much. And now for the invocation, Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you, Council President. Please join me with the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven...
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as in heaven. Give us today our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
The pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments?
No.
Communications?
Eli Fish submitted their application for a relay race and patio party on Saturday, March 23rd, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. in Jackson Square. This is an anniversary celebration.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, and the next one?
Kewanis submitted their application for their annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 30th, 9:00 a.m. in Centennial Park.
Any concerns or questions on that?
And the last one is all babies cherished requested to hold their 5K run on Saturday, June 1st at 9:00 a.m. This would be starting and ending at 3:50 Bank Street.
Any questions or concerns on that? The next city council meeting will be held on Monday, March 25th, 2024, 7:00 p.m. At the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. You've all been given a copy of the January 2024 financials. Hopefully you had a chance to look those over. If you've seen any concerns in there, any questions, any discrepancies, or any questions you have on any other line items there. We are getting near the end of the budget here, so we're going to start getting a little complicated at the end here, and then they'll come up in the end of the month. All right, so we have consensus to approve those, January 2024 financials?
Yes.
Okay, those are approved. The February 2024 minutes, you should have got a copy of those. Any questions or omissions or concerns involving the minutes for council meetings? So our lead consensus to approve the February 2024 minutes.
Yes.
Those are approved. We have many agenda items today, so we'll get those assigned right now. Item 21, 2024, the resolution to update current capital projects. Mr. Beely. Number 22, 2024, the Batavia Strategic Plan, Mr. Richmond. 23, 2024, Ryan Duffy to the city historian position, Ms. Schmidt. 24, 2024, the 2020, 24, 25 budget ordinance, Mr. McGinnis. 25, 24, the meter fees and water rates, Mr. Beely. 26, 24, the investment policy, Mr. Twitchell. Number 27, 2024, the parking lot capital reserve fund, Mr. Bayakowski. 28, 2024, the employee benefit liability reserve, Mr. Twitchell. 29, 2024, the purchasing manual, Schmidt. 30, 2024, the ammunition disposal for surplus, Ms. Briggs. 31, 2024, the equipment surplus of vehicles, Mr. McGinnis. 32, 24, the Stop DWI grant funds, Mr. Bayakowski. 33, 24, the police department budget for the Homeland Security, Mr. Beely. 34, 24, the assistance firefighters grant program, Mr. McGinnis. 35, 24, the mental hygiene worker bonus program, Mr. Richmond. 36, 24, the pro housing community, Ms. Schmidt. 37, 24, the pro housing officer, Mr. Twitchell. 38, 24, the drinking water source protection program assistance, Mr. McGinnis. 39, 24, the current water plant improvement capital project, Mr. Twitchell. 40, 24, Bureau of Maintenance Equipment Surplus, Mr. Beely. 41, 24, grant award for parks, Mr. Twitchell. And 42, 24, the LED street, the LED street light system. It's a long one. I didn't bring it, but...
Authorization to borrow, yes.
I was like, whoa, that's a long one. What is it? The LED makes more sense. Mr. Bayakowski. That is it.
There you go.
About 25. City Attorney, what do you have to report today?
Nothing in a general sense, Council President, members of council, but one matter for attorney-client discussion later at the end of session.
Any questions for the City Attorney? City Manager?
Thank you, Council President. Just an update, working with our grants administrator, Julie Daly. We have submitted four congressional direct spending applications. It was in your February update. One for the Pearl Street Water Project, one, and that's a $3.4 million project, wastewater treatment improvement project. It's about a $20 million project. The Police Bearcat for $400,000, and emergency operations center backup here at City Hall for $475,000. So we're hopeful that one or more of these projects is endorsed by our federal leaders in the Senate and Congress. Otherwise, we're getting ready to do a kickoff meeting for construction for the police facility this week. That's all I have.
And I noticed, and it reminded me, that it was one of our strategic plan items was the construction of the police station, so we'll be on our way to crossing that major cross. Any unfinished business?
Mr. President, the parade's coming up. Is there anyone that would like to chair that this year?
Which one? You're talking about the Memorial Day?
Yeah.
You usually do that. I kind of assumed you wanted to, but if you don't want to...
I will continue on, and I'd just like to let council know if anybody... Last year, I had a couple of nice ladies help on the committee. Anyone that's interested and wants to help, just let me know.
Yeah, I was hoping you wanted to do it. It almost sounded like you were trying to hand it off.
Wow, someday, you know? Nothing's forever.
Right, at some point, right. But at this point, yeah, if anybody wants to help, you know, contact Bob, and I'm sure he can give you some items and work to do, so thank you, Bob. Anything else? Okay. Number 21, 24, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to establish an update current capital projects and transfer funds for capital project budgets.
Second of I, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 24, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution adapting the City of Batavia Strategic Plan for fiscal years 24, 25.
Second of I, Mr. Twitchell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 23, 24, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution appointing Ryan Duffy to the city historian position.
Second of I, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 24, 24, the Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to adopt the 2024, 2025 budget ordinance.
Second of I, Ms. Briggs. I tried to call on everything. Questions or concerns? Bob?
Yes, as I expressed before, I'm just a little disappointed in the process, and everything was improved in its entirety. And I've certainly heard from many, many people dissatisfied with this situation, and I would have liked to have seen the tax rate per thousand stay the same. The county's actually decreasing the tax rate per thousand because of increased assessments. The revenue coming in is higher. One of the things I really was very dissatisfied, at a recent meeting, and I brought this up once, one of our council members concocted a whole story that, things that I supposedly had voted for doing at the audit committee meeting, which we were discussing the 22, 23 budget and compliance for the audit, which was very good, but I don't appreciate that sort of thing. So, you know, if we don't all get along all the time, there's no reason to be attacking other council members. But some of the factors we could have considered, maybe we shouldn't hire all so many employees at one time, buy so many new vehicles, whatever. The VLT money was never entered into it, not even a guess at it. I just feel that, you know, we could have done things differently. And I know I have all the confidence it's going to pass tonight with no problem at all, so just a few comments I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think you clarified that at the last meeting, so, I mean, it's okay to bring it up twice, but I thought that was put the rest at the last meeting. And the process for the budget, I believe, was, when you were on council many years ago, that was when they decided to do it differently, and that's the process we work on today. So, as you know, any amendments are done during the budget process, not now when we're voting. I have had numerous people come up to me in person, telling me that council's doing a great job and we're on the right track. So I guess we can't please everybody, but if they don't call me and tell me they're upset, I have no way of knowing that. So I encourage people for feedback, and the only feedback I'm getting is, you're doing a great job and, you know, stay on the right track, you know? So the assessments didn't happen this year because you, Mr. Bayakowski, were one of the advocates for not having the assessment to give our taxpayers a break, and I was along with you on that. But now that I look at it, I think when we interfere with that state process, I think it starts causing problems, and we should probably let it go its normal course and stay out of that lane. It's not really our process to get involved with, and we should let it go on as the state requires it to, and then work our budget off of that. But that's just my own personal opinion.
I just want to say I've also had positive response to what we've been doing in the city, and everyone's very happy and stuff like that. I've only gotten positive responses.
And let me be straight, no one was like glad we raised taxes two cents, but they're glad with the general direction and the upkeep of the services that we presently have, and the construction and the finally putting the bed, the police station project, and getting that over the finish line, and things like that is what they're pleased with. And if we could keep it at a zero tax increase, I'm all for that as well, but this year it just wasn't possible to do without cutting essential services. And as we saw in the news recently, we've had two attacks on our police officers, violent ones, one resulting in a really bad situation recently. So I would never lay off police officers or firemen or DPW people. They are essential for our public safety. And I think if anything, we should be taking this DCJS report right here that says that we're five police officers short. So if anything, remember what happened this past weekend, when next budget, when we start talking about we might want to hire more police officers, remember what happened this weekend, okay? That's all I have to say on this.
And also, I think the city manager has done an excellent job in staying ahead of these cost increases that every municipality is facing. And we don't want to end up like the town of Van Hurst. Has anybody been following what's been going on with the tax increase at the town of Van Hurst? That's the last place we want to be. They're facing an 11% property tax increase in the town of Van Hurst because they kicked the can too far down the road. But I don't think we want to end up there.
No, no, we don't.
Well, let me say this. We're bound to have disagreements. And my esteemed colleague brought this up twice. Well, you know, being offended is not a virtue. And let's piggyback on that. If you look at the Audit Committee, the Audit Committee ties in directly with the current budget. We go over the Audit Committee, we see, are we going to have any changes? Are there any changes? Now, at that Audit Committee, everybody was fine with it, and there was no changes. Now we get to this budget, and there's been no changes. I could look across the room here at all my colleagues here, and if they felt strongly about something, they'd get up and they'd say it, and they'd give a reason for it. I want to cut this, I want to cut that, for these reasons. Put it to a vote. Stand up and say, for these reasons. That didn't happen. And I'll say it again. Feelings might get ruffled, people might be offended. Being offended is not a virtue. This was a reasonable budget. It was a good budget. I'll stand up and say, it was a good budget, and I'll stand up and say, I couldn't find anything to cut. And as the Council President pointed out, we had a police officer, a member of our community murdered. We're down five police officers. So again, you want the budget to remain the same. Stand up and say, I want to cut this, I want to cut that, I want to cut the other thing. Don't virtue signal.
Anything else? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 25, 24, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution adopting Local Law Number 1 of the 2024 to Section 184-41A B C N O of the Code for the City to continue to establish new water rates, meter fees, and capital improvement fee.
Second of I, Mr. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, Mr. Council President, I don't know, Rachel, if there's some way we can send out an information letter with a water bill that people don't complain about not having a sewer meter? Because some people are confused, and I've had some feedback on that, you know, just explaining that it's part of the water bill, the amount of water you use goes out in the sewer. You know, people are still wondering where their sewer meter is, why are they getting charged? Do you think there's some way we can do that?
I thought we did. We may have, but they may need a refresher.
Rachel, is there a way we could put it on the bill, right next to the sewer meter in parentheses, that says, not an actual meter, but a calculated rate based on water?
Not on the bill.
There's not an open field where you can put that in the form?
No, we would have to do it as an insert.
Yeah, because that would be, I mean, that would be the best thing, if it's right on the bill and they see that item, then they would know there's a little explanation or asterisk. I just wonder if it was like, it's probably a worldwide form or something that we really can't adjust probably, or...
An insert, it's fine. I believe we've done it before, but we can do it again. It's been a number of years since it was, since that change took place, so I'm sure we can do it again.
Yeah, a poor fellow was in here our last meeting, and he said, I don't have a sewer meter, you know?
I get it all the time, too.
I'm sure.
Same question they get.
Sure, everyone here does, so...
Well, that's something you can agree about, that was a good idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 26, 24, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of an investment policy for the City of Batavia, New York.
Second of I, Mr. Beely. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Number 27, 24, Mr. Bayakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution transferring $6,200 to the Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund.
Second of I, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 28, 24, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring $7,110.31 from the employee benefit accrued liability reserve and to amend the budget.
Second of I, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution 29, 24, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the adoption of a purchasing manual for the City of Batavia, New York.
Second of I, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution 30, 24, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to declare police department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal ammunition.
Second of I, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 31, 24, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to declare police department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal vehicles.
Second of I, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution 32, 24, Mr. Bayakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the 2023, 2024 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipt of additional Stop DWI grant funds in the amount of $12,550 to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving while ability impaired by drugs.
Second of I, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Resolution 33, 24, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution amend the 2023, 24 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipts of a New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services Bureau.
Second of I, Mr. Guy. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 34, 24, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to submit an application for the 2023 Assistance Firefighters Grant Program.
Second of I, Mr. Twitchell. Questions or concerns? It's funny how the sirens are coming down to listen to the vote. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
We'll get the, the, uh, man. Okay, resolution thirty-five twenty-four, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to approve the Healthcare and Mental Hygiene Worker Bonus Program and amend the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four City Budget.
Second of I, Mr. Beely. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-six twenty-four, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution for the City of Batavia, Batavia to become a pro-housing community.
Second of I, Mr. Twitchell. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
And resolution thirty-seven twenty-four, Mr. Twitchell, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution appointing a pro-housing officer.
Second of I, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Bayakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-eight twenty-four, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to accept the Drinking Water Source Protection Program Technical Assistance.
Second of I, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns?
I, I just have a comment, this, the importance of this, and it's following the news, as we've all seen recently. Drinking water is becoming a commodity of its own in the entire country, and there's been a lot of problems. And luckily, we have excellent drinking water, we have probably one of the best in the country, I would almost say.